Good evening. My name is Jan Cutrell, representing the League of Women Voters of Bellingham and Wacom County. Founded in 1920, the League is a nonpartisan organization with more than 700 affiliates in all 50 states. Our goal is to encourage informed and active participation in government, increasing an understanding of major public policy issues, and influence public policy through education and advocacy. The League never endorses candidates or political parties. Membership is open to all people 16 and older, and we invite you to join us. Tonight's forum is being recorded, and recordings will be available on the website, on the City of Bellingham YouTube channel, and also on BTV Bellingham. No portions of this forum may be rebroadcast in part or in full without the written consent of the League. Questions for this forum have been prepared in advance by the League with input from the public. Attendees may submit a question using the question and answer button at the bottom of your Zoom screen, and we will ask as many questions as time permits. Tonight, we are hosting candidates for Wacom County Council. I would like to welcome candidates Kamal Batshu, would you raise your hand Kamal? Thank you, and Barry Buchanan, would you, thank you Barry, who are running for the at-large positions. County council members are elected to four-year terms. The council adopts and enacts ordinances or resolutions, levies taxes, appropriates revenue, and adopts budgets for the county. They establish the compensation paid to county officers, adopt comprehensive plans for present and future development of the county. All county residents may vote for this position. Here are the rules. Each candidate may make a two-minute opening statement and a one-minute closing statement. By alphabetical order, candidate Batshu will be going first for both the opening and the closing statements. Each candidate will be asked the same questions, and you'll have up to 90 seconds to answer. I will alternate who goes first each time. You also have a challenge card you may use to challenge your opponent's response one time. Just raise your card. You will then have 30 seconds to present your challenge, and your opponent has 30 seconds to respond. You may make only one challenge. To help track your time, when you begin to speak, the purple timer screen will display a clock counting down the time. It will turn yellow when 15 seconds remain, and when it turns red, your time is up. We ask that candidates be respectful of the time allotted. If you continue to speak, a bell will ring, and we may cut your microphone. Are there any questions regarding the rules? If our timers are ready, we can begin. Candidate Batshu, please give your opening statement.
Yes ma'am, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Hi, my name is Kamal Batshu, and I'm living in Wacom County since 1996. Today, I'm proud to say that I'm living my American dream, that I'm able to represent not only my community, but everyone in Wacom County. I moved to this country not knowing how to speak any English. I went to Bellingham High and graduated from Skunkum High, and that's where I learned how to speak English. Prior to, after I graduated from high school, I attended Bellingham High School, I'm sorry, Bellingham Tech College, where I got my two degrees in automotive and construction technology. I worked two jobs to support my family. After graduating from Bellingham Tech College, I worked in the construction industry. And in 2008, when the economy crashed, I got a license as a CNA and worked at Peaselt at Wacom Hospice House. Currently, I'm living with my wife and four adult childrens. We have a small hobby farm where I do hobby farming and really striving for a sustainable living. I love to teach sports, and I love playing cricket, and also I coach pickleball as a passion. And I compete in pickleball competitively. And every time I play, I play to win. I'm looking forward to bringing common sense to our county council and looking forward to represent all minorities and as Wacom County as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Batshu. Candidate Buchanan, will you give your opening statement?
Certainly, and thanks Jan, and thanks to the League for hosting this tonight. And thanks for BTB10 for covering this as we go into this election season. I'm Barry Buchanan, I'm currently the Chair of the Wacom County Council. I had a busy second term. I came out in 2018 after being re-elected and conducted a countywide criminal justice listening tour with the two members of the council on the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee. We went throughout the county in seven locations to talk about the failed jail initiative and what folks thought in the county about criminal justice reform. And the overwhelming answer was they absolutely prefer treatment over punishment. So we took that, and we looked at what kind of programs that we could start. We got the GRACE program, which is the ground-level response and coordinated engagement program. That's for frequent users of the 911 system for folks who are in behavioral health crises. We also created the LEAD program through the prosecutor's office. Prosecutor was led the way. That's a law enforcement assisted diversion program for some low-level crimes. We're also looking at a 911 co-responder or a crisis response team model, which would place non-uniformed folks such as behavioral health specialists and EMT at a behavioral health heavy site that their complaint comes out that way. We also worked hard on Cherry Point with the initiatives that we worked on with the stakeholders. We got agreements from the industry, labor, and environmental NGOs. It's just been a pleasure to work on the council this last four years. Doing a lot on housing, we introduced two new tax measures that will help affordable housing throughout our county. And we're working hard to create a racial equity commission for equity throughout the county, and I appreciate being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan. So here is our first question, and I'm going to direct it to you, Mr. Buchanan. If elected, what would be your personal priority to get accomplished during your tenure, and why?
One of the things that I'm finding that is so important right now is is mental health and behavioral health. And we have such a shortage of workers here. Behavioral health is really at the intersection of so many of our issues that we have here in Wacom County. Homelessness, criminal justice reform, and how that the fairness in the criminal justice system. We must address mental health. Since the 80s, when the federal government gave up on funding programs throughout our country, we've seen this bow wave of problems come sweeping through both here and all across the country. And it's the shortage of workers that is now really starting to hurt us. So we really need to work with our state partners and be able to come up with incentives and programs to get qualified behavioral health specialists here to be able to work on these important programs. The crisis stabilization facility that I mentioned in my opening is open now, but it still needs to be, the staff needs to be bolstered. And we're still looking for folks to be able to fulfill those roles. Same with the co-responder model I mentioned. We had that ready to roll out in June, but were unable to retain the person that we had wanted to hire. He was hired away to another state. So it's just so important that we deal with that because it's really such such a common issue to so many of the things that we have going on here that we need to work on.
Thank you, candidate Buchanan. Candidate Batshu, will you answer the same question, please?
Yes ma'am, so I would like to focus on our first responders and our law enforcement with the new laws that are directly affecting the safety of our community. Last year, it was defund the police. This year, it is handcuff the police. New laws make it so that they can't respond to the calls. This is a threat to the community. The recent State vs. Blake decision, that simply simple possession of drugs is not a crime. Charges that were previously felonies possessions, now they have been reduced down to gross misdemeanors. What does that mean is, so people who were felons a year ago, now they can go out and purchase firearm legally. Now let that sink in. I know it is a statewide, state-level issue, however, if I'm elected, I would love to work with our elected officials, such as our House of Representatives and Senators, and see if we could find, if we could amend those and find a common ground somewhere because a police officer or first responders aren't able to make arrests. That mean we have drugs flowing onto our streets, and that's not what we want. And our community is us.
Thank you, candidate Batshu. You will be able to, you will be given the first chance to answer this second question. Candidate Batshu, how appropriate and effective is it for the county council to also act as the Wacom County Health Board? What alternatives might you suggest?
The alternative, I would suggest that we have people that are come from different backgrounds, such as can we have people who work in the healthcare industry currently? I have, I experienced working in healthcare. I was a CNA for hospice house for four years. And after that, I worked in our facilities for 11 years. So we need people from different backgrounds to come to our health board and able to give advice and make sure that we can find better solution to the current situation such as COVID that we know is going around. And so that's what we need, we need people from different backgrounds to be able to be on the health board. So that's what I would like to focus on.
Thank you, candidate Batshu. Candidate Buchanan, would you answer the same question?
Certainly, thank you Jan. Yes, I believe that we need to reform the health board. I think there's certainly a place on it for elected officials because they can see the broader picture and things that are going on in the community and also have a better idea of the financial impacts of the decisions that they're making. But I agree, we need medical professionals on the health board. We need, let's say if we had nine people on a health board, we would need, you know, a good majority of those people to be professionals, both in the medical field and the mental health field, as I mentioned before. That's another important aspect. We need people that are on there that have a good sense of the community as well. So like our public health advisory board we have, we have an at-large member from the community on that that's able to give that perspective. So it's important to get the, both the physical medical presence of someone that has that experience, which we do on the advisory board, but I believe it needs to go to the health board level so those folks can cast those votes based on their experiences in their field, as well as the mental health field. So to me, it's important that we have a health board that does have a broader level of experience.
Thank you, candidate Buchanan. And would you undertake this third question? What is your opinion about ranked choice voting as a possible option for the county if allowed by the state legislature?
I think ranked choice voting is great. I have signed on as a supporter to Fair Voting Washington, which is a group that's promoting and doing demos around the county. In fact, I'll be hosting something that's going to have a demo for the public next week. So I really believe in that. I think it gives voters a better chance to express their priorities on whom they think should be holding office. So if that comes before the council through the legislative process, as you mentioned Jan, it has to come be enabled by the state. I would certainly vote for that because I think it gives much fairer representation to our voters.
Thank you, candidate Buchanan. Candidate Batshu, would you answer the same question, please?
Yes, I would have to agree with Mr. Buchanan whatever he's talking about. And yes, I would do the exact same thing what Mr. Buchanan is looking to do. So thank you for that.
Very well, and of course, you are first for this next question, Mr. Batshu. What county council proposals or allocations would you support to increase the availability of mental health professionals and services?
Can you please repeat the question one more time?
Yes. What county council proposals or allocations would you support to increase the availability of mental health professionals and services?
Yes, so as we all know that we have a mental health crisis on our streets. We also have the 32-bed crisis center, which is a great place to have. And also, I would propose that we can have another, such as like, I would say, a place where such as ER or only for the mental health crisis. If we get a call in the middle of the night, or any time where people can go in and check in, I would propose that. And having Lighthouse Mission is another good place to have, and the base camp. And if he, and also, we should work with a local law enforcement agency if they could have people with with mental health experience that they can be on the police force and also make sure our firefighters are trained adequately to respond to those calls. So that's what I would like to support and look into.
Thank you, candidate Batshu. Candidate Buchanan, would you answer the same question, please?
Yeah, I have several things I'd like to see happen. Number one would be a crisis or an urgent care center that would be an expansion on our crisis stabilization facility that would allow more beds. We just, it's a great, it's a great concept of what we've done already, but we just need more of it. We need more availability and capacity. I'd also talk again about this crisis alternate response team, which I think is important, where we could have folks that show up to behavioral health calls that aren't, you know, police officers or in police cars. They are trained professionals, and they can actually provide treatment and get folks into the help that they need. I'd also really I would look to any kind of an initiative that we can put in to get more funding to expand what is becoming a kind of a campus out at Division Street with the crisis response, crisis stabilization facility out there so we can fully utilize that property that we have out there. So just getting a lot of these programs in front of the public and potentially a ballot initiative in the future that we could look at some additional mental health revenues.
Thank you, candidate Buchanan. And likewise, would you answer this question? Wacom County Climate Action Plan is in the process of being implemented. Which item of focus do you feel is most important?
Well, I think to start off with, you know, talking about having an office of climate response is important. We need an executive level, director level authority that is looking at all the climate impact programs that we here in Wacom County are looking at. We need to obviously look at mitigation of greenhouse gas, that's super important. That's some of the work that we did at Cherry Point does a lot of that. We need to look at what more we might be able to do, I think. We need to look at, we're implementing the CPACER program, which is all about creating opportunities for commercial property owners to be able to use the property tax assessment method. There's a way, a method for financing that they can get through that office. And we've passed an ordinance already implementing that program. So I'm looking forward to see how that rolls out and how folks can take advantage of it. It allows these commercial people to, or commercial property owners to be able to do green energy projects on their buildings such as climate resiliency, alternative energy such as solar. And it just, it allows for financing that they can get, like I said, through the property tax assessment role, that mechanism.
Thank you, candidate Buchanan. Candidate Batshu, will you answer the same question, please?
Ma'am, can you repeat the question one more time?
Of course. Wacom County Climate Action Plan is in the process of being implemented. Which item of focus do you feel is most important?
Yes, first of all, I would say let, I would support where market can dictate a lot of this. Because if we force people to do certain things, then a lot of people may not be able to afford a lot of the changes that may get implemented. I do support that in areas wherever we can install solar panels, if we can, then also support having car chargers installed also. And then we should utilize our Cherry Point area to maybe bring in industries such as Green Apple that wanted to start a plant out there to do biodiesel plant. Maybe we could utilize that area for that type of industry and bring in more industry that can start green jobs out there. And also work with Cherry Point, maybe BP or P66, see if they have other technologies that they can offer to maybe mitigate a lot of the greenhouse gases. So that's what I would like to do.
Thank you, candidate Batshu. And now we're coming on to your last question. The question is, candidate Batshu, how should the county address the increasing cost of housing against the lack of jobs with a living wage?
Good question, ma'am. Right now, I, the county, when you look at their permitting process, very slow. I myself helping my brother to build a house right now. And in order to do a lot of the things, before we could even start the project, we had to go in and get a stormwater runoff plan that cost us $7,000 on top of everything else. So we need to look into if we could scrub some codes that are useless, you know, and see if we could do that. Because I worked in the construction industry, and to get a permit is hard right now. And if housing demands, if it's high, there are people who are moving in from the outer state are willing to pay higher prices. And that makes it much harder for the local people that are from Wacom County, much harder to afford homes. If we don't have affordable housing, that mean we cannot bring an industry from the outside because people are still going to struggle to find a better place to live. So I would definitely look into, see if we could get rid of some of the codes that are not really working for us. Scrub the codes, and hopefully we could maybe faster the process of their, for their permits to go through and mitigate this housing crisis that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Batshu. Candidate Buchanan, would you kindly answer the same question?
Certainly, I certainly agree with Kamal's assessment about permitting. I wish I could hold my camera up and out the window next door because I have a project going on. It's just a single-family house on a standard Bellingham lot, and it's, this project started at the end of February, and it's been start, stop, start, stop. And so far, here we are sitting in October, and they have a foundation, and that's it. And the hay keeps getting spread, then picked up, and then spread again. So it's really been a slow process, so I agree with that. I also think that we need to create some incentives for both developers and buyers. You know, we're buyers and renters. We've implemented two things that came out of the legislature. That was 1406, which was a sales tax rebate, kind of like our rural sales taxes. We don't, it doesn't cost any taxpayers any more money, but that goes towards housing. And 1590 is another sales tax measure that the county passed this year to provide more money for affordable housing. Another program that we're working on, I just have a meeting on it last week, was potentially having EDI funds, which is Economic Development Investment Funds from that 1406 tax that could provide infrastructure upfront money for developers to be able to put in some water, sewer, sidewalks, things like that, and be assured of that money upfront on their projects so they could focus their resources other places. So those are things we're working on.
Thank you, candidate Buchanan. Candidates, you now have the opportunity to make a one-minute closing statement. Candidate Batshu, please give your closing statement.
Thank you for having me here. I really appreciate it. And thank you, Mr. Buchanan, for being here. And my closing statement, all it is, all I want to say that I am bringing diversity to the county council. When I say diversity, I don't mean by my skin color, I'm talking about my experiences. I came from India, not knowing any English whatsoever. But today, I can proudly say that I'm living my American dreams. When I say diversity, I'm talking, I have a better understanding of the local culture because our county is not the same, it is very diverse. So I have friends from a lot of different cultures, and they speak a lot of different languages. And I'm looking to represent them, not only them, but county as a whole. So if you want to change on the county council, I would love to get your vote, and let's make some better changes to our county council. Thank you so much.
Thank you, candidate Batshu. Candidate Buchanan, please give your closing statement.
Yes, I want to again thank the League for holding this tonight. It's been a great forum. I think, you know, I believe in that diversity as well. You know, I'm a fourth-generation Wacom County resident. My family immigrated here in the 1890s. And so, you know, we, my family immigrated here out to the Everson area, Lawrence Road. And my mom took up residence here in Bellingham. But I think what I bring to the table is experience and leadership that has been proven. We had two years of some of the hardest, most difficult work this council's ever had to do through COVID and all the things that we took on while we were doing that. And I led the council through those processes successfully. And I also really appreciate your vote and your support in November. And I wish everybody well, and Kamal, it's great to see you tonight, and we'll see you later.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I thank the candidates for being here today and for being willing to run for public office. Voters can find more information about the candidates online at vote411.org and in your voter pamphlet. Ballots will be mailed. Ballots will be mailed on October 13th, 2021. Your ballot must be postmarked or in a ballot box before 8:00 PM on November 2nd, 2021. Please remember to sign the ballot envelope. And if mailing by postal service, we recommend mailing early. Thank you.